Was the sheriff gonna show up, or is he not gonna be a part of this?
I don't know. Haven't heard anything.
Wonder where Gill is? He was supposed to show up too.
Yeah, I don't know. He's still got a few minutes.
Mr. Mayor, a little pre-meeting business if I can?
Um, yeah, I'll give the floor to five minutes. We got five minutes.
Can I have it from, I mean, it's like, it's before the council meeting. This is just casual conversation between us and everyone in the room. Can the council members like agree on like their uh their little name tags? Cause it looks like everyone's just kind of like grabbing one out of the trash and like throwing it out there. I mean, Councilman Smokies is looking real good. I mean, I say that.
I would do my like Smokies, but I can't, so.
I think it's up to them. It's up to you guys if you wanna go with the uniform.
Yeah, Adam, do you think you can teach them how to do that? I mean, like, as a good leader of work.
Is this a fucking democracy?
Say again?
If this is a democracy, we can all have our own name tags, the way we want them.
It's up to you.
I mean, it just looks, I don't know.
I thought they were government issued.
Feel free to talk to me after. I'd be happy to give anybody any tips.
He'll teach you, but he'll have to charge.
What is he? What is he selling though?
Well, hello.
Conservative.
Hey Jay.
Well, Robert's gonna want purple all the time.
Nothing wrong with purple.
Until the ballers come back.
I doubt that they would risk shooting up government employees and, you know, doing all that fun stuff. They have a little bit of common sense.
Didn't stop them in the past.
Hey, there's my man. Hey, Gilly, we gotta seat back here if you want.
Hi Gilbert.
Holy hell. Oh, yeah.
Welcome, Ashley.
Yeah, what's up, Ashley?
It's Ash.
The AG.
Yeah.
I didn't know he was a council member.
Gilbert's whatever he wants to be.
No, I'm talking about Ashley. Why is he sitting in Gilbert's chair?
Isn't that a crime?
Mr. Ashley, can you get out of Gilbert's chair, please?
Uh, one moment. I'll do that.
You're impersonating a councilman at this point? You're the AG. Have some respect.
He's not moving. Yeah, well, we'll just have to get him arrested later.
Alright, good deal. Trying to make it a little yard. I don't know why everyone's so tense.
Yours looks real nice, Gilbert. How'd you do that? I mean, I can't.
Polly, I can show you sometime.
What? Do you want like changing colors or?
Oh, excuse me.
Just nod at looking like shit.
He is retired after all.
So I am.
Oh, yeah, I think we got one more minute till it starts, question mark?
Yes.
This was here for one.
That's weird.
Councilman, I guess.
What's a good thing if somebody didn't show up, cause then maybe one person's standing around up here.
I don't think they're ever gonna show up again, obviously. Not being negative, I just. I'm just saying. A high tower, what the hell? There's three high towers.
He had babies.
Oh my god, he's cloning himself.
Where are their three high towers?
Excuse me? The order of city council meeting, dated four thirteen, nineteen eighty-six. Um, wanna first start off by, um, giving the floor to council member Danob to lead in the, uh, pledge of allegiance.
I gotta put the pledge of allegiance. I have to stand for the. Oh, we still do that?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flags.
Get off the table, please.
The United States of America.
We're there. To the republic, you got it. Which is the one nation.
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For all, amen.
We both.
Thumbs up for America.
Almond. Almond.
Let's go.
Alright.
Did he just pull up a gun?
Okay.
I just say almond.
Alright, moving on, um. Obviously, first and foremost, um, wanted to address the public notice, but the accuser isn't, uh, here. We can definitely talk about it later, but. So we'll follow the normal format here. I'll, um. Any council members that would like to go up first and speak at the podium? You can have the floor.
Hello, council. Uh, Robert Danob, uh, council member, um.
Oh my god.
Back. Nice to see everybody here.
She showed up. Hey, uh, AG, there she is.
Would you like to have a seat, ma'am? And is this council, councilwoman Warren?
I'm for the rodeo because. She looks like a clown for a rodeo.
Ma'am, is this councilwoman Warren?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you. Welcome to council. Um, I, uh, wanna apologize, cause I'm gonna talk about kind of quite a few things. It's been quite a while since, uh, we've had a council meeting, or I've been into a council meeting. Um, so I'd like to adjust quite a few things. Um, first thing is, uh. The, uh, pledge of allegiance. And, uh, I'm someone who loves America. I love this country. I love the flag. I'm proud to say the pledge of allegiance. Um, I, I, I just, um, the thing about America and Americans, you have the right to. Mock the allegiance, to make fun of it. You have, you absolutely have that right. Um, but understand that when, when many of us say that pledge of allegiance, uh, there's a lot of meaning behind it. It's, uh. It's, uh, thinking about those who served and, uh, those in this room even who, who served, uh, to allow us. To say that pledge and disrespect it if, if they choose to. And, um, I would just ask that, uh, if you don't wanna say the pledge, or, you know, that's absolutely fine, that you would just respect the, those of us who, uh. Who do have a lot of meaning and, and care a lot about that pledge, uh, and let us say that, uh, without any interruption or mocking.
Amen.
Secondly, I, I wanna talk to everyone about opportunities and choices. Um, the thing I came to this city and the reason I love this city is because of the opportunities and, and choices that this city represents. Um, I, uh, I came to this city with a big dream, uh, actually two dreams, and, uh, that, that big dream was to. Open up a restaurant in the name of my grandma Ina.
Oh god.
And, uh, that's not gonna happen. Um, whether, whether the federal government decides that it's gonna happen or not, um, in my mind, that is no longer gonna happen in this city.
Ooh.
Whether that happens in, whether that happens in another city, or another opportunity comes up, uh, somewhere else. Or an opportunity exists here in the city, uh, cause I am a cadet with the police department, um, no one knows. But the, the thing of the point is, is that we all came here because we all had dreams and we all wanted to have the opportunity to. Better ourselves and, and live in this incredible city. There are a lot of problems that go on in this city, and one of them is, um, been going on is with the businesses themselves. Also, I'm been a big proponent of doing something to help out the new people in the city. Um, so as someone who wants to leave their mark on the city, I've come up with an idea. I'm, uh, going to start a foundation called. Uh, Chase Your Dreams Foundation. And what this foundation's gonna do is going to help businesses who wanna start up, um, with some kind of financial aid. Uh, to, uh, to help you guys on your paths. Um, I'm not sure what's going on with the BBB. I'm praying that Mr. Brown's gonna be able to give us some insight on that. But whether the BBB exists or not, there are still businesses in this city that can and need to be run by the citizens of the city. Uh, so, uh, businesses that have TIL systems that, that are already established, and we need to get owners into those businesses. And so what I've done is I've earmarked the amount of three hundred thousand dollars that's going to go into this, uh, foundation. To go towards, uh, not only helping out the new people in the city, but to helping business, potential business owners get us started. Um, to, to run this, uh, foundation, uh, Chase Your Dreams Foundation. I've talked to, uh, our esteemed mayor, Chase Reeves, who has agreed to trustee and be in charge of this. Um, and the reason I did that is because there's no one in this city I trust more, that every penny that I'm giving to him. For the purposes of, uh, bettering the city with businesses and helping the new people will go exactly for that. Um, I, uh, I've seen everything that's going on this week, uh, as far, far as the drama, uh, and the accusations. And, um, I'd like to let all those, anybody who may feel that way, uh, know that I'm willing to listen whatever they, that they have to say. But, uh, you know, uh, you're going to, you're talking to someone who, uh, experienced as deputy mayor. Uh, I, we were gonna have a winter ball, and, uh, I volunteered my building up on, uh, Vine Wood Boulevard. Uh, to have the, uh, the event, free of charge, absolutely no, no charge whatsoever, nothing out of it, just. People need a spice to have a ball, and I got a space, let them use it. Um, I was denied that because the mayor, uh, thought that there would be a potential for the perception of, of, uh, uh. What's the word? It starts with a C.
Maybe corruption.
Conspiracy, corruption, yes, corruption. Thank you very much. No, corruption was the word I was looking for. So as someone who's dealt with mayor and known this guy since he's came into the city, um, I find it absolutely laughable that, uh. He could be accused of, uh, corruption, but even at that, I'm still willing to listen. Um, the only problem is, is, and I'm really looking forward to hearing what the people who made those allegations have to say. Because, uh, from what I'm hearing, the only, uh, reason that this presumption of corruption has gone on is because. The mayor of the city, whose job it is, is to make sure the city runs well, met with a department head of a very vital part of the city. I don't know what thunder you have, and the absolute perception of the mayor doing his job to me. Is I question anyone's judgment that they would perceive that as corruption. Um, and, uh, I'll stop at that, cause I think I know where you're going after that. How's that?
Um, yeah, that's fine. I, I did hear the.
I was talking to Vinnie, by the way.
Yeah, I, I hear the chief justice, so.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, I'll stop there, but, uh.
If you have anything else to say, you can.
No, no, I meant on, on that point, uh, that's, that's where I meant.
Okay.
Um, also through last week's meeting, I read that, uh, four new council members were appointed. Um, with a former non-sitting council member as the only other council member on, in the council. Now, while I do trust Chase and, and trust his decisions, um, I question him since he's, uh, a constitutionalist. That this was held without enough people to have a quorum, uh, as far as councilmen to have any kind of vote. So I would like to put forward to the council that there'd be a vote to, uh, to have a, basically a reseat of those, those seats tonight. Um, by all means, inviting the sitting councilmen that, that filled those seats to talk to us as a full council again. And since they, I, once again, this is just my idea, since they are, were seated last week. They are allowed to participate in this council meeting and vote on seats other than their own. Um, that's a, that's a motion I'd like to put forward right now.
Uh, I would open it up to the four existing council members. I have no problem doing that, um, uh, and constitutionally, we could speak about that now or later, but. There was no, there's nothing, there's no instance of that, of a blackout during an election to account for it, so, um, if the judiciary has an issue as well, I'm up for any type of ruling on that. So as far as I'm concerned, it's open to the council. If the council agrees on it, judiciary agrees on it, then I'll, it can happen, in my opinion.
Uh, Councilman Tim Bradford, I would like to hear what the judiciary has to say first, uh, and, uh.
Yeah, me too. That's why I turned to him.
What do you?
Well, I'm sure he wants the, uh, Vinnie, would you like the floor for, hmm, whatever topics beyond this one as well?
Vinnie?
So just sort of fill this in to me. So you're, you're, you're.
You mind, uh, coming to the podium, I can't wait here.
Kind of. I don't wanna get up.
Well, I mean, if I was in your courtroom, I'd get up.
No, I would make you get up, understand?
Well, you're up now, but I digress, please.
So, so just to understand, the, the issue was that there were four sitting, new, new sitting counselors who are here, right?
Were seated last week.
Right?
Um, where there was only the mayor and a previously sitting councilman present at the time. Um, I, there were extenuating circumstances, and I understand those extenuating circumstances, but.
What were those extenuating circumstances?
Uh, because of the blackout that happened in the city as far as I'm concerned.
The election would have happened during the blackout.
Okay.
And, uh, the, my contention is that, uh, there was not a quorum while the meeting was able to be held. There was not a quorum to have a vote on anything like that, and I would just like the, those, uh.
Whenever there were any other vacant seats, as, as with the blackout, things have obviously been a little delayed and postponed. The, the, the timing is, is not solid. Um, so as we do with, with other missing council seats, we, we fill those in, um, sort of in the moment.
We've always had a quorum to, to follow through on this.
Sure, but have there, have there been times where those seats have been filled without the, the entire sitting members available?
To my knowledge, not without a quorum, no.
Well, he, the entire sitting council? No, there has not.
But, but there has been enough.
Or, yeah, rather, yes, there has been. No, he's asking, he asked if there was, has it been appointed where there hasn't been a full council? And we have done that, where there hasn't been a full council, we've appointed seats.
Yeah, cause obviously, there's empty seats, cause.
Okay, great. So what makes this different is my question.
Well, because the, all the other times, there was a quorum, enough councilmen's, uh, at the meeting to hold a vote. Where in the last week's meeting, there wasn't.
I guess it boils down to, to justice is, do I have the power to appoint seats?
I don't think it's.
You want to think about something for a minute?
Yeah, sure.
I mean. It's not their fault they didn't show up.
You okay? If you guys want, I can scoot over so you can have a seat. You guys wanna sit up here? I can sit over here, David.
Vinnie, you with us?
I think he's still thinking.
It's hard for some people.
Oof.
He is old enough.
Yeah.
I've been, uh, looking at the constitution in my brain, which I have been photographically memorizing, because that's what a person does around here. Section seven of the constitution, uh. Section two of, uh, article three, I don't know how you wanna word that, anyway, if no person's willing or eligible from the previous two categories, which are candidates from the immediately. Or the immediate previous, previous council election, or candidates from the council election before that one. If no person's, uh, eligible from those two categories, any willing person, the council votes to be a council member with a simple majority vote. It doesn't say there needs to be a quorum. There is no minimum number, uh, it's just a simple majority vote.
Wow.
So there doesn't need to be a quorum in general for anything that's passed, not passed, or is this just on seating council members?
That is, uh, for legislation, not for filling a vacancy.
I think we have our answer.
I, I say nothing unconstitutional about the, the council of the city. Is what I'm saying.
Okay, I appreciate the ruling on that, and then, um, uh, Danab, are you, are you?
Although I have one last thing.
More, okay.
Yeah. And in leaving the one of.
You can add the floor after that.
Okay. And, uh, and my last, oh, on that subject, yes, I'm done.
No, but are you, are you done addressing the council?
Uh, no, just one last thing, uh, just in imparting, I just wanna leave you with the, uh, the words of one Mr. Benedict Caputo. Don't fuck wild animals.
Oh, hell.
Oh, I can't believe.
Wild are reminders.
Yeah. Vulgarity, please.
I wanted to say, wait, before, we don't, I wanna get lost in that last statement there. Thank you, uh, Robert, for your donation to the city. Um, they should be grateful that, um, of your gesture, and I will, uh, do the best I can to make sure that money gets put forth to the people that. Want to foster businesses in, in the city, and running that foundation will be nice after, after I leave office, so I appreciate that trust in me. So thank you.
My pleasure.
Uh, before you continue, can I just clarify one statement that, uh, Mr. Danob's just stated? Uh, wild or not, it doesn't matter the kind of animal. Thank you.
Amen.
Thank you, thank you for the clarification, um.
I just don't want people getting confused.
And nor do I think my legacy should be this statement, so let's.
Thank you for clarification, Chief Justice, on that one.
Just in case anybody's got any pets at home and the lonely, just making sure, you know?
Yeah, alright, so Chief, please, um.
Sorry, Mr. Handover has a problem with that, uh, but.
Wait, what?
You know?
Yeah. So, um, would, while you're here, do you, do you wanna have the floor before we go through?
Oh, I do not. I just, I'm here for the show. I heard there were, the circus was in town, so.
Alright, fair enough, fair enough. So the, uh, next council member wants to address the council?
Hello, everyone. Uh, Councilman Gilbert Brown. Sorry for my absence for a while. Other things had to be taken care of, but.
Welcome back.
Yes, I am happy to be back and will be continuing my position, um, here as well as with the BBB. Uh, just to sort of continue off of what Councilman, uh, Danob said. Yes, the BBB does exist currently, although I still have, um. Limited, uh, powers when it comes to handling businesses, which I am currently working on. Uh, you know, getting more self-established. There are things I can assist people with, so I'm. I'm currently talking with several people who are trying to set up businesses, just to at least get the plan together and do everything that I can do at the moment. And, um, and yes, and I do appreciate your, uh, donation for the city. And I would like to be, you know, to help out with that wherever I can, cause I also agree, I want people to have jobs and own businesses. Especially, you know, new folk who are, you know, moving into the city. I think it's a, a good opportunity for them.
Bring back the BRV.
Yeah. Yeah, so just to let everyone know, I am back. If you do wanna talk about business with the BBB. Send a, uh, letter to my personal PO, which ZVZebraVulture405. As the, uh, the mailbox at the office, um, was removed.
Okay, and are you currently the director of the BBB, or are you, um, is there?
I'm, technically, I am still just staff, but I should be made director hopefully soon.
It says in the constitution, the governor appoints the director of the BBB, so I'm assuming the governor's gonna be around then to appoint you as BBB soon.
The governor guy.
Here's hoping. Yeah, if anyone had any questions regarding BBB or anything. I'm sure we have a, a new governor by now. I would hope.
Mr. Brown, Dr. Brown?
Yes.
Uh, would you be able to have a private discussion after this meeting as well?
Uh, yeah, I can.
Okay, appreciate it.
Yep.
And that's all. Sorry.
Nobody can hear you, Danob.
Should say.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just, I'll just repeat. Uh, basically, Dan, I was asking about, um, businesses that are currently owned and which ones are currently available for purchase and having a public record of that. Yes, that is something I am currently working on. I do have a list of all the businesses. I just need to put it into a. More easily read document that I will make available for everyone to look at.
Nice, appreciate that.
Any other questions?
Can you please repeat that post office number? Ah, no questions for me. Welcome back and, uh.
I think I heard someone from the back, I couldn't hear what they said.
Could you please repeat your post office number?
Oh, yeah, ZVZebraVulture405.
Thank you.
Alright.
Write that down.
Alright, um, and the next council member, let's go up and speak. Oh, apologies.
Fight it out, not dance off.
Oh.
Ow.
Yeah, never any dance offs.
Quite many.
See me dance.
Where's the lip sync contest? Come on.
Maybe, maybe we do.
Hey, everybody. Councilman Tim Bradford. Uh, it's been a while. Uh, I got caught up in Mexico. Uh, on a lot of things, uh, I just wanna be. Be honest, uh, I'm, I'm gonna get caught up with everything. I wasn't sure what's going on, and, uh, I did hear about things that were going on this week. I tried to, tried to, um. Stay neutral in the situation, not knowing the full intent of every. stay neutral in the situation, not knowing the full intent of everything. But I did want to state my return as a council member and, uh, that's about it. I have nothing else to bring to the table.
I have a question. Uh, what, what situation are you referring to?
What do you mean what situation? I was caught up in Mexico. The federales had me.
You just said you were trying to get caught up on the situation. Uh, what situation?
Uh, from what I know, there's, uh, something going on with the hospitals and I hear both parties here today and, uh.
Actually, I wanted to, uh, make a comment on it as well. I, I kind of want to wait till after the meeting and have a private discussion.
I'll open the floor for that discussion for the people.
Alright.
And also with the, uh, with the, with the letter that was, uh, sent to the public that I did read as well. It was very concerning and I will say that Chase has done a lot for the city from what I've seen. And I'm, I was appalled when I read it. Especially with Dr. Cat as well. She's also done a lot for the city. And, uh. It's crazy to hear those, those types of things being said. That's all I got.
Would you like to speak up, Dana?
Say again, Dana?
Yeah, what, I have a question. What'd you bring us back from Mexico?
Um, me.
A little bit of marching powder, huh? You know what I'm talking about, right? We're going skiing.
We'll talk, we'll talk later, Benny. We'll, we'll talk later.
Alright, next council member.
Hello, everybody. Newly appointed council member Adam Smokey. Um, I'm here to speak, uh, regarding the vote of no confidence that was raised from, uh, two members of hospital staff last week. Following that vote of no confidence, the mayor asked, uh, council members to perform their own independent review of the constitution to see if that could be handled as any form of a council matter. Through my own personal review, and I mean, I'm far from a lawyer. I'm not a judicial expert. But in my review, it does not appear to be a council matter whatsoever. Um, the governance, the governance of the hospital of Los Santos, Los Santos Medical Services is an internal matter and it is not something that the council has jurisdiction over.
Correct. Could the people that, um, brought the council, brought the issue up to the council even vote on that in their current status in the, in the hospital?
With the way. Sure, yes. With the way I read it, I don't believe so. It seems that the, uh, voting eligibility is limited to duly licensed medical professionals. And the medical board itself determines, I guess, who the, who qualifies as a duly licensed medical professional. It seems like there's some sort of medical exam process that has to be done.
Yep, it's all internal.
Correct. That's my understanding as well.
Yep, so I appreciate you. That's a good job. Um, thank you for looking that up and clarifying that.
No problem at all. And, uh, that's all the business that I have today.
Just to confirm, it's Smokey, not Smokey?
Yes, correct. Nope, I'm not French. Smokey.
That's disappointing.
Uh, extensively.
You'd have to for this job.
Like a chimney.
Alright, um, the next council member can, uh, address the council and the people?
So we heard from all the boys.
If anybody wants to go, I will pick.
Hi, Benny.
Hello.
Ooh.
Um. Newly elected council member, thank goodness, um, Pauline Morris. And I just want to say, last week, I think people got very heated. And I think that it's very important to remember that everything we do, we do for this city. We do not do it for ourselves. We do not do it for our own glory. We do not do it for any kind of financial reparations. What we do it for is to keep this city going. That is why we are here. That is the only reason why we are here. Pardon, sir?
Speak up.
Well, I would appreciate you not talking while I am trying to address people. So anyway.
Speak up.
So what I just want to say is, if we are all adults, we should behave like adults. We should act like adults. We shouldn't, and to quote, my undersheriff, stop acting like children. So everybody, keep everything civil. Because we are all adults, are we not? Eh.
Depends.
Well, okay. Alright, well then I, I just, I concede the floor. Thank you very much.
Good job, Polly.
Yes.
Great job.
I do agree though, though this is.
Excellent, excellent first presentation, Polly.
Yep. Alright. Who would like to go next?
Hello, newly elected councilwoman Sandra Warren here. Um, just, uh, I realized we're all getting brought to the floor, so I may as well mention it now. Uh, in regards to the issues, uh, brought up inside the bulletin that was posted, this is an entirely federal issue at this point and will be dealt with accordingly through those, uh, through those routes and not be able to take any questions regarding that at this time.
You will, though.
Okay.
Does anybody have any questions for the councilman before I?
Yes.
Yeah, oh, yeah, we all have questions.
Alright.
Hello, council. I am Ashley Williams, your attorney general.
Woo.
Um, so, speaking of the letter that was posted, uh, from the desk of the councilwoman, uh, it is leveling pretty heavy charges against the mayor and Dr. Cat from my reading of it. As the attorney general, my job is to investigate crimes. Um, someone to make a public notice of like, hey, I saw somebody murder this person. It would be, you know, not my job if I didn't follow up with that. Uh, Ms. Warren, like, as much as you may want this to be a federal-only issue, you put this in public notice. And I, you and I need to have a conversation about this at the very least. I can't accept no comment at this point. And I'm looking forward to talking with you, hopefully after this meeting. And I hope I don't have to compel you via subpoena to talk to me. So. Please speak up, councilwoman, so everybody can hear.
One hundred percent, I'd be more than happy to discuss this in private with you later. Uh, it's, it's just, uh, in regards to the public.
Hopefully she's not with her friends.
Okay, so, so I'm gonna hope that we're gonna find some time after this meeting to talk. But i- in any case, uh, in any case, um, the AG's department as well as the police department do not discuss active investigations. And that's all I gotta say about this. Thank you.
Yeah, they, they, that was, that was the point I was trying to make on the stand is a lot.
Yeah, we're gonna talk after this.
Yeah, we're gonna talk after this and do this properly as opposed to have it all laid out on the floor more than it already has been.
Well, I mean, you put this out in public.
You laid this on the floor, councilman.
Yeah, and I guess I got, I got a question to that. Uh, you don't agree with that, right? I mean, you think any kind of meeting that, that is held between, you know, two departments should be, you know, public? So you don't, I mean, because we, you know, we don't want to perceive anything all handed on that, right?
Man.
Councilman Moore?
Uh, Councilman Moore. Yeah, we can hear you.
Alright, well.
Councilman Moore, no comment or?
While she may not have a comment, there are people that have comments, so as far as, I guess, narrow down the comments currently, down to this, since this was on the floor right now. So anyone have any comments about this particular subject? Um, and then we'll move it on and then we could circle back to your work. Alright, go ahead.
Yep. Uh, my name is Dr. John Hudson. Uh, MD, I've been practicing in the city since Gilbert was even a doctor as well. I just want to state that I have no issue or any regards or any ties to her statement. I have nothing. I, yes, I was an EMT to help Dr. Gilbert build that. I stepped away from my private practice in order to help.
Were you working for Dr. Drake, whom was corrupt as fuck?
I have no idea. I separated myself from him, but okay. I mean, if you guys have comments, that's fine. You guys can wake up out of thirty days and come out of nowhere and attack me if you want.
I mean, you woke up after six months, but that's not an issue, is it?
Here we go.
Hold on, hold on. Um, just to get this going, because, um.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I have no statement regarding her comments. I have no ties regarding that at all, so.
So, um, you were initially one of the ones that came up for the, uh, review of.
Yes, I meant to clarify that I was asking for a review. I didn't mean to say that. Because after sixty days in the constitution, it says they are up for review. And that's all I meant by that when I brought it up. I didn't want to waste everybody's time here at the last council meeting, speaking for hours.
No, no, no. And, and I want to make sure that you understand it wasn't. That was a good exercise in figuring out exactly what you wanted to know, right?
Right, exactly. Because there is no medical board appointed. I, there are no sitting members at the moment. There's nothing. So I feel like I had nowhere else to go except speak in public and that's all there was to it. There is no malice, no ill will, no nothing. And in fact, I actually want to have a private conversation with Dr. Cat and with, uh, Dr. Gilbert, as a matter of fact, after this, if possible, so we can speak like adults.
That should have been the first step. Did, is your matter?
Except people weren't around, so.
Hold on, hold on, everybody. Let's just keep this going here. Alright.
Would you guys please stop? Just stop.
Yeah, I can't, um, please, I can't hear back there. I don't know who else is talking, but if you're going to talk, come to the podium. If not, please stop talking. If you can't stop talking, please leave. Thank you. Alright. Um, no, I wanted to say, not at all a waste of time. I'm glad the issue got brought to light. I'm glad we're working through it and I hope that, um, we.
That's all I want.
Yeah, exactly. And it's all that I want too. So thank you. So don't feel bad.
Alright.
I am thanking you for, for bringing it up.
I just wanted to clarify my position.
Uh, no worries. I appreciate that.
Alright, thank you.
And I appreciated the exercise as well.
Yeah, well, if you want to be mayor, that's gonna be your job. So you're gonna have to figure that out. So no, good job. I appreciate that. Alright.
How's it going? How's it going? Uh, I am EMT Dave and I currently on LOA. Um, I have not been around for a while. Well, but I thought it was necessary to get out and when I read the accusation, um, I was baffled beyond belief on what could happen. Is there anything that you could possibly share at this moment, since this has now been made a public issue? Um, why this all came up in the first place? Like a brief summary?
Uh, well, from my point of view, I'm not sure why there was ever, uh, a concern. Um, I had a meeting with Cat, which is completely warranted behind, dare I say, a closed door, because doors close and we have meetings behind closed doors. Um, just to discuss what was going on in the hospital. They asked me, you know, to look at the constitution and see what it meant, you know, to, to give my advice or to.
Why were members trying to get into the meeting, not allowed entering?
I, first off, I didn't, they were never not allowed to enter the, who's?
Actually, uh, sorry.
Who's accusing me or at least this, I can't?
Is it stuck?
I'm, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna take a seat because.
Buddy, buddy, just, just wait, just wait.
Alright, alright, alright.
First off, it's a public place. Alright, they, they, no one was barred from entering City Hall.
They were actually.
It barred from, not to my knowledge.
I walked right in City Hall and had absolutely no issue.
I was there when Sandra was in City Hall and talking to reception.
Can we let people at the podium speak?
Can we have folks step up to the podium?
Yes, step up to the podium.
If you're gonna talk. Alright.
But yeah, I kind of brought, uh, sorry to get back, but I did kind of bring my attention, but I also wanted to give my outs, uh, support to Cat and to the mayor. As far as I've been around, they've always welcomed me with open arms. They've never, as far as I'm aware, have never talked behind anything confidential behind their back. And I wanted to just let you guys know that you will have my support. And I just think this whole accusation is just ridiculous. Thank you. Stop my piece.
Uh, Robert Banner Fox, I just want to make a statement to, to, um, uh, people saying they were barred from within the building. At no time was anybody barred from the building last week after city council. Um, or during when the mayor was meeting with, um, Mrs. McCastle. I had been upstairs when they started their meeting, came downstairs. And this councilwoman, I, I don't know where she's went, um, Ms. Warren, was inside the building, talking with reception and then asked me if she could be part of the meeting. I said, there is no official council meeting going on at this time. The director of the hospital was meeting with the mayor and uh, that was it. And he was in his office. I could let him know she was here and she was, no, you don't need to do that. He's going to have private meetings. I will take care of that. And then left the building on her own volition. So I, I do not know, understand why I would hear someone say that anyone was barred from the, uh, the building. That's not what happened even remotely. Thank you.
As I recall it, um, and correct me, Cat and Banner, if I'm wrong, Stacy Ricky, or, uh, not Stacy Ricky. Um, there was a gentleman that walked in.
It was Stacy Ricky, actually.
Walked into the middle of the meeting, so there's no way anyone.
Can anybody confirm if it was Stacy Ricky or not?
It was Stacy.
Absolutely, Stacy Ricky.
Uh, so, these, again, these accusations are basis and anyways, continue on. Uh, you have the floor.
Alright, uh, Dr. Coda Bridges, medical examiner and deputy director of Pillbox. Um, I just want to clarify because I think there's a fundamental misunderstanding occurring and what the accusation was leveled from was people seem to be in there, the impression it was a medical board meeting with the mayor. However, that was not the case. Only one board member was present and that was Dr. Cat. Um, I was also present. Uh, I am not a sitting member on the medical board. I am only deputy director. I am appointed by the director, but I do not have a seat on the board. And then Doctor, or, uh, Mr. Banner was there as well as, uh, Fanny, who's right over there. She is head of the nursing department. So it was a couple of department heads talking with the mayor about constitution and how it works. And how all of our, you know, situation that was brought up in the previous council, what the, our opinion on it was, um, based on the constitution. There wasn't a board meeting, right? I know people came in and I know, you know, we had a secretary, somebody came up and said, hey, David was here for a, a vote. Um, but it wasn't a board vote, you know? It wasn't a meeting that had anything to do with the public. It was a private meeting behind closed doors. And it was not a medical board meeting, which seems to be the main misunderstanding and why there might be accusations of collusion and corruption flying around. But, um, I can assure everybody as somebody who does not sit on the medical board, it was not a medical board meeting because I was involved and I would not be involved in medical board meetings.
I don't know if you can answer this, but how would they even know that we were having a meeting to begin with?
Honestly, um, if you ask me personally, I think this gets very close, um, at least on some aspects. I'm, I'm not throwing this out there. Um, if we were followed, especially with that letter being posted right after, um, Cat had, Dr. Cat has been made to feel like she doesn't belong here in the city or she's not doing a good enough job. That coupled with being followed to City Hall, um, and the accusation, it borders very close to harassment. Um, I've talked to her about this. She doesn't feel comfortable, you know, saying that, so I'm saying it. Um, that, you know, Huddy, you know.
Just like private facts.
We all needed to speak like adults. I, I think it was Huddy. Um, and I'm totally okay with that.
I said it too. We do need to have a conversation like adults. We do.
Absolutely. And, and, you know, you say that we haven't been around, but we've always made ourselves available via fax. I'm around.
Well, I mean, in city, the city, not through the fax.
Let me finish.
Alright.
Wait, 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 wait. What I don't want this meeting to divulge into or to, to come down to is, uh, talk of hours and who's, who's around or whatever. We have pausing procedures to follow. We have constitutions to follow. If those, if you have problems with those things, bring them up and do that. This is not the place to go back and forth about who was where and what was, you know.
Alright, yeah. That's completely fine. Like I said, that's why I was stating afterwards. We, we just want to have a conversation afterwards. We don't have to even get into the politics of it right now. We can have this afterwards. We don't even have to keep continuing the route we're going right now and making accusations or saying anything.
I, I, I say that in it that we don't meet, like, I don't want to get this conversation. Clearly, he still has something to say. I don't want him from saying it.
Yep, you're right.
What I am saying is, this back and forth between who's here during what time, I don't want to get into that. I don't think that's at the level we need to speak at. So, you have the floor again?
Absolutely. I, I agree. I, I was just, I won't, I won't push that any further other than to say, you know, I'm, I'm a late night guy. That, that's how it falls. That's, this is extremely early for me, but I felt like it was important. And if they brought something to me that was important, I would have made myself available outside of my standard schedule. That's all I'll say.
I appreciate that. Okay, does anyone else in the public have anything to say about this, uh, public notice subject?
Hello, uh, name's Connor Fitzgerald. I'm just here as a citizen today. Um, I'm friends with both sides of this issue. I'm friends on both sides of it. I know pretty much everybody in this room at this point, besides some of the fewer, the newer officers over there, new deputies. Um, I, 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 I had my own personal thoughts about the hospital because there had been times where it wasn't staffed, and that's been an issue across everywhere in the city. Um, and I actually found out today, just minutes before this meeting, that the hospital wasn't actually able to fully function up until like a week and a half ago. Is that correct, Dr. Cat?
That is correct. We didn't have access to the fifth floor because it was still under construction, uh, and that's where we have the.
Can she speak up?
So, um, just in case anyone didn't hear, uh, she wasn't able to hire anybody at the hospital due to the fifth floor where their database is being under construction. Um,
We didn't have mail until last night, so Dakota and I have been using our private mail up and right after the fifth floor was finished construction. So, we are hiring. We can do it now. We just couldn't.
Who's speaking?
Doctor McCastle, can you please yell?
Can you repeat what you just said? So, some people in the back didn't hear you.
So, just to, uh, reiterate, uh, about two weeks ago, we got access to the fifth floor. It was under construction, um, for a long time. That is where the database is for where we would hire. So, I wasn't able to actually hire anybody, even though we wanted to. We didn't have access to the medical mail because the, the, again, still under construction. So, Dakota and I were using our private mailbox after we got the fifth floor finished with, um, their construction. So, we, you know, can now hire. Like, there was things that were out of our control that was stopping many things.
No, I understand. I understand. Um, I had a similar issue just trying to figure out how to get people paid at PDM for three or four weeks. Um, had no way to pay employees, and everyone was selling cars and no one is getting paid. We lost pretty much all of our staff, other than two people and myself. Uh, three people, sorry.
I'm sorry.
Um, it, it's, it's an issue across the entire city, and there are people like Mr. Danob here, uh, Casey, Angelica, me, um, Huddy over there, uh, the mayor, and others. I'm sorry if I missed you. We are adamantly trying to, you know, assist people, but that's another issue entirely for many people. My main concern was is, the hospital wasn't staffed as much. Um, there's times where I've had accidents and I wasn't able to get medical attention immediately, and I had to figure out a way to get to the hospital. That's just a personal matter on my hand. Um, but I'm glad to see that you're here. I'm glad to see Dr. Code over there. Um, I think the biggest thing is, is when people send letters or faxes, people tend to misconstrue words to emotions that aren't actually there, or they misinterpret those words into whatever they internalize. And that, that's on both sides of this, of this issue. Um, and instead of having face-to-face conversations and actually talking about it like we're, like earlier, we're all adults. You need to have the conversation before you start accusing and start going off in different directions because it pulls more and more people into the problem. It causes more and more drama. It causes more anxiety, and it gets to the point where people just don't want to live here because they have to deal with so much. We're supposed to live here and get along and be in the city together, and that's what it should be about. Like, we're, we're a community. Like, we're stuck with each other because we all live here. So, I, I don't know what else to say other than that, but, um, anyway, look forward to seeing y'all. Appreciate y'all being here. Have a good night.
See you, Connor.
Appreciate you, yeah.
Thank you, Connor.
Thanks, Fitz.
Alright, if, um, does anyone else have anything to say on this matter? Because I definitely do. Before I close, I'll move to the next thing. Oh, uh, I'll do as I asked the council to do. That's my mayor.
Wait, wait, wait. What about Casey? Did she not say anything? She got up.
Oh, that's true. Well, did.
Put her on the spot.
We're still in the same, we're still in the same subject. That's why.
Well, Casey, do you want to speak about this? Uh, do you want to speak about this subject at all, Casey?
No, not, not really.
Okay.
Why are you sure?
What did she say?
We can't, not really, not really.
Give it a crack. Let's go.
Come on, everyone's got an opinion. Like Connor was saying, I was angry.
That's alright, that's alright. So, um, addressing the public notices, as everyone has already stated, you can imagine that I was completely shocked. Um, and floored when I read the accusations of me being a corrupt mayor. Um, as you may or may not know, um, the idea of me being corrupt is a very bad one. It would, uh, basically put a nice stamp, and I would be sent away. So, when I read this, beyond my experience and everything that I've done for the city in the past, it literally cut deep because I felt like everything that I've ever done, it didn't matter, that, 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 that this could be written about me, and anyone can make baseless accusations at any moment about what I do and how I run the city. You may not like me. You may not agree with me. You may not want to talk to me, but you cannot sit here and tell me that I do not try everything I can for the city and, 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 thank you, Chief Justice.
Saying I don't want to talk to you. You're right.
Yeah, oh, yeah, okay.
Damn it, do I respect you.
And yet, and yet, here you are talking to me. Um, as, as, as the mayor, my job is to, uh, do what's best for the city, how I see fit constitutionally, swiftly, if I can, but get those things across the line for the city. So, when it was a question of whether I was being corrupt by having a meeting with a fellow councilwoman about council, council issues, and also issues about her, um, interpretation of the constitution, which any council member can ask me for a meeting for, to do. Now, one thing I don't understand is every meeting we have beyond the council, if we were to lobby or to talk to each other, it would be behind closed doors. The four council people that were appointed at the last meeting, they were appointed behind a closed-door meeting, behind, with Barry and I. So, if I'm corrupt, then that means these four seats are corrupt. And we've already heard from the chief justice that there was no issue with these four being seated. And I'm sure the chief justice can sit and give an opinion on closed-door meetings, quote unquote, for the mayor's duties and, and the city.
I have no idea what that was about.
So, again, basis accusations that do nothing more than try to tarnish my standing and my efforts and everything in the city. In my opinion, it was a direct attack on Cat's work in the city and her efforts to fix everything. As we already know, there are things in the city's infrastructure that need to be fixing. They need to be fixed. And those accusations spilled over to me in a very personal way. So, I don't condone it. It's all baseless, and I am not shocked at all that the one person that accused me of these things isn't sitting here to listen to me talk of those, of the public notice.
I agree.
Does anyone have any questions for me on this matter? I'm open to any questions from anyone in here. I have nothing to hide from anyone.
No, that's fine. Would you actually, guys, I'm gonna ask you, if you guys would actually vote to remove her from the council seat? Is that possible you can do?
Yes, please.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is.
Please, please do it.
Do it now. Yeah, please remove her.
Please remove her.
Stick around to face the consequences of her actions is kind of a joke.
Uh, uh, alright, alright, okay. Let's do it. Alright. We can do it from here. We'll do it from here.
Please remove her.
Alright.
For voter no confidence.
Alright, the motion is passed. Um, show our hands of voter no confidence on the seat of Senator or, um, Councilwoman Warren.
My hand is up. I just don't remember.
Mine, okay. My hands up. Let the, uh, let the record show the vote is unanimous. We're voter no confidence against the, uh, councilwoman. She's no longer a city member. Um, uh, deputy sheriffs, um, do you mind if she comes in here and causes a problem? You have my explicit permission to remove her. Thank you.
Does that mean it's not corruption for me to spend time with you now?
I didn't even, I didn't, that is not, it is not.
Save us all from that, uh, keep that ban in place.
Is it corruption if I forget your name?
No, because I had to get yours too, so we're even. Alright. Okay.
Yeah, the, well, the people.
Sorry, yeah.
No, don't, don't say sorry.
No, no, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Alright, so.
I just want to get shit done.
I, I agree. I agree. Um, let's see. Councilwoman King.
Doctor Cat.
Or Council, Council, Councilman King, sorry.
Council King.
Um, no, go ahead. I don't, I don't.
I think I'm good. I think I'm good. Nope.
Shh.
Pardon me?
Um, I have nothing to bring to the council. I, I would like to the public to know I am available for anything that they would like to bring to, you know, their attention to the council. And, uh, yeah, that's it. And I'm, I'm open for anybody, anything they want to talk about. Thanks.
Are you, um, are you proud we are continuing on your father's tradition in the council with the pledge of allegiance and the thumbs up for America?
Thumbs up for America, absolutely. Yes, I love it all. Thank you. No. It's not a cult.
It's not a cult.
We can call it that.
Not a cult.
It's amazing you all say that in unison, like on command, like a cult would.
We accept the one of us. We accept the one of us.
One of us.
Uh, hold on, Dana. Hold on. That has changed. Give me a second here. Let me get mine out.
What was your, what is your question?
Uh, can, can you speak on your platform? Uh, I wasn't here last week, uh, and I didn't get to hear, and I'm sure a lot of people weren't. So, can you, can you tell us a little bit about you, what your platform is, and what you're standing upon here for?
Uh, well, I guess I'm standing here last, because last week I talked about, uh, the need for lea- leadership in the community, and that it was definitely just needed because look, I mean, look at what we did today. Look at how many people are here today, you know? Uh, we need to get the city.
Thank you, Casey.
We need, we need to get the city running, and, uh, we need things to happen. So, um, my platform is to help, uh, the new people that are coming in and make sure that they want to stay here and don't want to leave and, you know, and thrive. I don't, you know, whether you're businessperson or, or just, it doesn't matter, you know? Let's, let's get, let's get things rolling.
You're a hero to all new people.
Thank you. I, I meant to ask this to all the newer council members, since I didn't get to hear, or we didn't get to hear their platform, if they wouldn't mind speaking on themselves as well. So, thank you.
You're gonna stop being in Mexico.
Yeah. Hey.
Maybe get ahold of the Weasel Nose, get a copy of the, uh, thing on tape.
Yeah, I, I actually just wanted to welcome you to the council seat, and I think you'll do a great job. And I also wanted to, uh, shout out, uh, your hostel that you got opened up there. Uh, she helps out, new hired, new people to come into the city with cheap rent, and she also sells them, uh, 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 pages and, uh, and, uh, cameras at a deep, deep cutting cost. So, uh, I, I think what she's doing for the, the new people in the city is, is incredible. And I just want to let her know that how much I appreciate it in the public to know.
That's good to hear.
Thank you, Councilman. And, uh, yeah, so everybody get together and meet everybody, you know? Uh, let's welcome new people and, it's a way everybody.
Do I have to do this?
Yeah.
I guess the vote is.
Oh, Benny, you don't have to.
Alright, um, uh, did you, well, um, do you have something to ask?
Yeah, it's to Casey.
That's, okay. Um, you have another question. Councilman King.
Hey, Casey, um, just wondering, uh, are you working on anything with like the tourism board or, I forgot what you guys called it?
Uh, I, that was going, um, I guess we need to get Mr. Uh, Councilman Danob. Uh, again, go on again. I think it's, that's the.
Actually, that's part of the, uh, Chase Your Dreams Foundation. Some of the money is being earmarked to go to that. And, uh, and, uh, I also, uh, have, uh, donated the building I have up on Vine Wood. Uh, the office will be, uh, for the purposes of, uh, the, uh, the welcoming, the, the care bearers, as I call them. And, uh, there's also a, uh, a joint to that building. There's a huge empty space where Regina was originally going to be that is going to be open and given to the, uh, the city or the charity, the foundation rather, uh, to be used as, uh, whatever they deem it, uh, they want to use it for, whether it be a huge welcome center, an event center, whatever they think will be the best for the community is what they're, they're gonna do with that.
Great. Um, just wanted to say, um, I want to speak to you after about donating to the, your foundation, um, in addition to, uh, the hostel, uh, because I want to shout that out as well. Uh, you're doing a great job. Uh, the lodge up in Plepa that I own, I'm offering free rooms for anyone who's new to the city. They're free to come stay. Just let me know, just, just gotta let me know that you're new to the city, and I'll give you a room.
Can I just point out to Mr. Danob that he did say that he wanted to have a conversation with you after, so don't, don't disappear into the ether? That would be great.
Councilman Dana, do you have literature on, on what you're working on for us to read or anywhere or?
Uh, basically, uh, I do have a file cabinet, but, uh, basically, it's, uh, where I was just collecting a bunch of like-minded people. So, we could talk as a group, uh, about how to tackle it and the best ideas that we had, because there are a bunch of people in this city who really care.
Set up a meeting, um, and I'll talk to you. We'll see what we can, uh, donate towards the foundation, because I'd love to get some businesses open. I know, uh.
Let anybody else in the community that's been while in here a while and as well all.
Yeah, I've been, been giving out cars and stuff, so.
The more, the more that, uh, we can, uh, help out the new people, uh, establish businesses, uh, the more businesses that will be open, the more jobs that will be available, the better it is for the community in general. So, just putting that out there for anybody.
Alright, thank you. Appreciate it.
Appreciate your generosity too. Thank you.
Um, yeah, just, uh, for the record, uh, Councilman King, can you touch on, um, what you offer over at, uh, the Saman Hostel to kind of let everybody know and maybe, uh, get you, uh, you know, some more, uh, people heading over there, helping you, for you to help out and everything like that, just for, so it's on pu- public record?
Okay. Uh, well, for the hostel, um, we're at full capacity right now, but, um, if you're new to town, um, and you want to stay on the bottom floor, it's seventy-five for your first week, so just to get you started. After that, you know, we talk and see, make sure you got a job and whatever, and then we'll reevaluate. And then upstairs is the apartments. That's a little bit more. Um, also full capacity. Um, it's three, three hundred per person. It's just a two-room apartment. And then we have the rooftop. And the rooftop is meant to be a community space for everybody in the city. And, uh, like I said, we're gonna do a thing tonight, and it's a huge rooftop with music, and it's just meant for people to go there and, uh, as a meeting spot, I guess.
Hmm. Thank you. I appreciate everything you're doing. I just want to put that out there.
Thank you.
I appreciate your comments. Alright, uh, last but definitely not least, right?
Oh, someone cat.
Doctor Cat.
I have really nothing.
I'm sure, I mean.
I'm sure, I mean, I mean, I would, thank you, I mean, there's been a lot going on.
Bring up that thing you guys were talking about in your secret meeting. It's a joke, please.
Did you see where she went?
Hmm.
Wait, she left?
She pooped.
I have a question, Cat. Did you get ice cream during your secret meeting? Did not. We didn't get any cream in our pockets. Not, not during the meeting, that's right. I don't have anything, if anybody has any questions for me, I'm more than happy to answer.
Any accusations of corruption against you at all, I just want to make that clear, I did not have anything to do with that, I did not say you were corrupt, nothing. That was not anything to do with me at all. And like I said, I would more than happy, be willing to speak with you and Gilbert after this meeting, if possible.
And and absolutely we can, and we have always been available, um, and you know. Very well that I'm very easy to, to have a conversation with, so. It, it, this has all just been really, really weird. That's all I have to say.
Agree, and I, and I'm, I'm, I imagine, I mean, I won't speak to the entire council or anyone, but I would imagine. We all feel the same way.
Doctor Cat, I do have a question for you. So, I was just thinking about what you had talked to me about when I was still EMS. And the fact that the hospital would go, it would lose the uh, local doctor if there were five people on duty?
Okay, I don't know why people are hung up on that, um, but yes, that.
I think it's, I think the question is just, is there gonna be enough people to have an actual doctor available?
I I don't know why people are hung up on that, we're always available. And no, don't worry about like. That has not been an issue, so let's not make it an issue. It's fine.
The only reason I ask is that, you know, um, when I woke up from a coma, I guess. I I pounded on my door for, you know.
So you, um, you, nobody paid, see, but did you have Nurse Joy page?
That sounds weird.
Okay, so.
That's, yeah, that's a little weird, I issue that we need to.
Inner working of that part, there's nothing here the city council can do to make people wake up.
That's why we want to have a conversation privately.
Guys could, that's an internal thing and that system that works at the hospital is an internal system, so please. Let's, let's not get into the nitty gritty about that stuff here.
Okay, alright, well, I I I was just really questioning about the, having to have, you know, if five people are, are.
Again, that's not something for city council. If you have questions, come to the hospital and we can discuss that, but that's not something for.
Or, you know, or, you know.
She, you know, she will be able to hire, so a lot more doctors will be hired at this new time now.
Yeah, let's stop, stop.
Doctor Cat, I just want to make a comment, I I I I am so sorry. Uh, what you had to go through, you and uh, the mayor. Uh, with those accusations, I I hope the public can see how seriously we take uh, those kinds of accusations, because. Like the mayor said, if there's any corruption in his office, he's gone. And he cares too much about this city to be gone, I trust me. On that one. And uh, and which is why we take, when those accusations turn out to be baseless and foolish. Uh, this so seriously. And uh, so I do apologize to both of you, I'm so sorry you had to go through that.
Moving the meeting forward, um, since all the council members have spoken, we'll open the floor to the people, if you guys have any issues across the board. With relation to what we can do, please come to the podium and state your statements.
Alright, since I was supposed to do this earlier, thank you mayor for that, uh.
I apologize, I totally forgot, but you have the floor now, which is better than never, right?
Sergeant uh, Benjamin Riggs and Ollie of the Los Santos Sheriff's Department, uh, I want to. Make a comment on a statement I made last week during the uh, city council meeting regarding uh, speed limits. Uh, it's fifty-five both county and highway, not seventy-five highway. Also, make sure you're obeying traffic laws, even. Okay, I'll let Mickey O'Shea remember that, tell you, talk about that, so, okay, anyway. Yeah, cougars and mountain lion. Anyway, um. Just wanted to reiterate that, um, because I I we do, we may not be around the fully due traffic stops all the time, because of the limitations of our staff. We do notice it even when we're on and off duty and we do watch. So be uh, be mindful of that, um. And I wanted to correct my statement uh, from last week, that it is forty-five in city, fifty-five highway and uh, out of county.
Uh, Sergeant Riggs, I have a question for you. How do you feel about stop and go laws?
I swear to Christ, I'll kill all of you. Oh, here, I got a question for you. I got a question for you, Mr. Bradford, what happened in Mexico?
How many balloons did you fit up there?
Uh, no comment this time.
If any, what about non-functioning intersections?
If we want the Chief Justice to have.
Function intersections, baby, you should stop and wait till there's time.
What about cops that pull over people at them?
You have to stop twice, so let's move the meeting along, is anyone else uh, in the audience or the people have anything to say?
Nope, I'm good.
Alright, that's the case. I was just about to gabble gabble.
Okay, sorry, hi, my name's Lars, uh. Hello, it's my second day in the city, I um, liking it so far. And uh, just a couple, I don't really know who to talk to yet, but I'd like to be either a mechanic, part of a crew, or maybe start my own shop. If I can speak to anybody about that, I'll be outside after the meeting. Uh, that or the firemen. I've done EMS and.
Man's looking for a job, let him get a job anywhere he wants. Live your dream, we are the city of dreams.
But, yeah, I'm open. Just hit me up. Thank you.
In Auto Garage and uh, Senior Mechanic at uh. Benny's, if this man is looking for a job, I can. Reach out to the CEO of Benny's, find out maybe if I could get him certified. And uh, you know, maybe get him a job either up there or in the city, we see how it work flushes up. Um, I just want to let him know if he needs to reach out to somebody, I'd probably be a good point to contact.
Corrupt mechanic.
Even possible?
No, it was a joke, chill.
Mechanic than work for a corrupt doctor.
How did I, I know you guys, I know. Go ahead, alright, yes sir.
Alright, um, so, I'm new to this city.
Not a single thing on my record.
Give the man some respect here, Jesus.
Alright, 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 so um, apparently there's somebody in the city that's already started up uh, like a, a flight school, uh, like a, so some pilot.
Nope, nope.
I mean, you have to define started.
Uh, yeah, I don't know.
What'd he say?
What that means, but um, so uh, uh, somebody that was apparently up in the um. Uh, up in Grapevine that was started or something like that.
There, there was definitely talk of it, there might have been some. Little bit of literature that I'm sure Chief Justice could easily, e- easily talk about, I'm, I, do you want me?
I do not want to hear Vinnie talk about this. God damn it.
No, so, that, yeah, it has been talked about, um, nothing got passed.
Alright, so I'd like to talk with somebody about that, sometime or another.
Good luck.
I don't even know if, if anybody's even seen Billy.
I'm Chief Jim Crusher to you, Bradford.
Billy walked into the hospital a few nights ago and that's.
Yes, he did, yeah, Billy was around.
Click your heels together three times, so that's who I would speak to is Billy Falco, I don't have his. Postal offhand here, can somebody help him with that after the meeting?
Sure.
Alright, thanks.
Or not. Hey, they're still talking to you, but. They're still talking to you. What up?
Alright, uh, so yeah, Modilio Sarkuchi.
Sure, what, slower?
Sure. Uh, Duilio Sarkuchi.
Oh shit, I think.
Welcome to the city buddy, uh, uh, then just remember when you come up to talk, let us know your name.
Alright, thanks, my man.
Alright, does any, does anyone else have any comments, questions or concerns for us to close down the meeting?
Close it.
No, thank you very much, meeting adjourned.
Thank God.
At least we didn't have to do Operation Lavender. Yeah, come with me, come with, yeah, come.
What we can do is just put a, well, what we can do, we can decide.
Ooh, I'm getting a headache, so sorry.
What, say what?
We're all just gonna stand here judgingly?
Just run, you'll be fine.
Um, thank you, I appreciate it.
Well, I'm not going anywhere.
Where'd Henry go? Mayor, no colluding over here, please?
Oh God, I don't, I'm, I'm nervous, my hands are sweating. Oh no.
I appreciate that.
Oh no. Oh no, I'm scared. Oh God. I'm gonna hide underneath and do. I, I don't know when I'm supposed to. But until someone, yeah, I gotta bleach it until someone asks me questions. And then I'm not gonna know what to answer, I'm gonna be like, huh? I don't even know. Well, I don't have to worry about that, I, I just. I don't even, they're gonna ask me questions of why I want to be city council. Oh, I don't know. I'm gonna be like, I don't know.
You wanted to put your hat into what?
Is Ban- Banner's gonna be city council, Banner for city council, that would be.
Okay.
Oh, he's putting my name into city.
So what we're gonna do is next week we'll have, um, we'll do the election and have someone seated. We'll probably do that first, yes.
Oh God, oh God, I'm not gonna, oh God, I might not win here next week, I might have to.
How you doing?
Valerie.
I heard you were the lead guy.
Oh, it's pretty loud, hang on, yeah.
For city council.